Motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
All right, it's been moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, two seconds, one second. Okay, Mike May? All right, so we're going to move to public comment, but before I move to the public comment, I'm just going to read a brief statement. The State Board's agenda is full, and I may place limits on public comment based on the number of members of the public who intend to speak. I will give each speaker five minutes or three minutes if there are large numbers of speakers. When your time is allotted, I will ask you to conclude, and the board will move to onto the next speaker. The department will not respond to public comment aside from requesting clarification. The department may place a topic raised in public comment on a future agenda. A topic from public comment that is not related to an item on today's agenda will not be addressed at today's meeting. Thank you. All right.
Good morning.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Good morning. If you have any comment, if you would please use the raise hand feature in your Zoom. It should be down at the bottom near the right. If you are on the phone and wish to do so, I believe it is star nine. We have no public comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right, Director's report.
Okay, well, thank you. So I'm going to go back to what I started with, with the obvious and some of the changes to our spaces. So one thing that we've had available to us is funding to upgrade any of our conference spaces specifically tied to use of technology with a goal of increasing our access and availability to the public. While certainly there are different rules applying for board members and the requirement to be here in person for boards, since that has been that flexibility previously in place has been waived, we do appreciate the value of increasing our transparency and availability to the public to attend. So going forward, you're kind of, this is sort of a transition day, so I realize that it's not really conducive depending where you're sitting, but it is going to look different. There will be a different screen on the wall, and the tables will be set up differently with technology within them, and the setup of the room will be better for the meeting space. So when we come back in January, we expect it to look different again. So we're very grateful for that. That will also apply to some of our other spaces. Earl, tell me if I'm wrong. I don't know if there's more happening at the ICN room, but then definitely our spaces downstairs in the basement, if you've ever been part of a meeting in B 100 will be.
All the conference rooms throughout the great building on the second and third floor will have the new technology as far as screens and cameras and technology tables.
Perfect. Thank you.
That's very cool.
So yeah, we appreciate that. So that will be part of our new, our new normal going forward. The next update is, and again, this is just sort of a preliminary review, and I did hand out a sheet to each of you each meeting, and I want to make sure I give kind of an overview of update on relief funds. This is just a general category of expenditures. Again, the process for districts to receive reimbursement is based on their submission of expenses, and so this isn't like a day-by-day live update. But at a high level, what we've seen is an increase of about $200 million in terms of what has been reported to us and reimbursed on. That does not mean that districts have not already allocated or intended to spend the dollars. It's just what's been reported back to us. So when we talk about some of the projects that we're doing and some of the work that's happening, like Brad talked about this morning, a lot of it is tied to these funds. I do want to note that while there is a significant amount of money available, that does not come with staff, and it does not come with support for the department to do this work. So the department has taken on an incredible amount of new work and ongoing work with the staff that we have. While some of these funds are available to support that, our internal structures and staff, which we'll be looking at applying a little bit more, it is very limited. So I just want to give a very public recognition to our staff, who has taken on a tremendous amount of responsibility within their regular duties. So I am very grateful for all of them for doing that. If you look at the rethink K-12 education model, that was the one that Brad talked about this morning. What we've also done then, what is new, is since the last time we met, and you may have read about one of the governor's press conferences, is we have offered, based on some funding we have, opportunities for districts to apply for something called belief grants, and that is the blended early learning and educational foundation grant applications. And this is for districts that could receive up to $10,000 each to work on planning grants to establish models of blended learning and early childhood, early learning, early childhood settings in partnership with a school. So if you think about back when we implemented TLC, there was kind of a planning year to think about, for districts to think about what it might look like. We want to offer some incentives for districts to think about what this might look like for them in different sizes of districts, small districts, large districts, different models of what this could look like, that help us identify any barriers that might be in place that we need to address in order to move some of this work forward. If you recall, we did fund some pilot programs, specifically a council bluff who was implementing a model, but we want to look at other models because we know across the state childcare is an issue. We know we want to engage with our early learners sooner, and we're exploring some different models of what that will look like. So there'll be a lot more detail coming out about that, but since that was announced and that is a new allocation of funds that we're using, I wanted to make sure you were all informed with that as well. I also want to recognize the success of the Mental Health Summit. That was the project that we contributed $20 million to with the University of Iowa in partnership with them to implement mental health resources to schools. We had well over 1,600 members in attendance at the convention center, and it was just incredible three days. So this is something that, again, as we use our relief dollars, we are not independently funding anything because these are limited one-time-use funds. We are trying to sort of inject funds into projects that have sustainability to help ramp them up faster to expand their capacity, and this was one of those projects. The University of Iowa is obviously contributing a substantial amount of funds to this as well, had the systems in place already to do the work. This allows us to ramp that up faster. And it was a great, it was a great turnout. I don't know if anybody was, I'm not sure any of the board members were able to attend, but it was very well received by districts, and we're really happy about the event. And again.
I was there presenting at different conferences, yeah.
Yes. Anything you want to add on the day?
No, I just think that the educators and people who were attending the sessions were super engaged and very excited about what we're doing. So it was really encouraging to see that.
Yes, I agree. Another thing, just to give an update on that I had mentioned before, is that the department is continuing to engage with workforce roundtables specifically identified to address two areas. One, workforce shortages, and two, work-based learning opportunities for schools. And I'll talk a little bit more about that here in a second, but this stemmed from an initial roundtable that was led by the governor and then the directors of the different agencies. And from that, we've continued to have follow-up with businesses and districts to help them learn how to move forward with this work. It can be really complicated when you have a lot of parties involved, and there's lots of steps. We're trying to really simplify that process to help them engage with this work and be sort of a single source, you know, who's the one person you can call, and then this team behind kind of helps you find a way forward. So that work is growing. It is continuing. We have staff that, again, are committing a lot of their time to this work on top of their regular duties. So we want to make sure we appreciate, recognize them as well. Paul Nissen, who's not here, has spent an enormous amount of time engaging in this work. Really grateful for her support of that as well. It's good work, and we look forward to some of the changes that it will help implement. The other thing, a quick update on, and both of these will kind of tie to some of the priorities we have going forward. We do continue to have regular monthly conversations with superintendents. We have two sort of structures. We have a formal webinar structure when we introduce something new. We have a presentation, a recorded conversation, and opportunity to answer questions. The superintendent weekly, or excuse me, monthly webinars are really designed to be conversational, and we had a great conversation at this last one. It's an opportunity for all leaders to engage with us, department staff, share feedback, ask questions, you know, inquire on things they would like us to follow up on. And I think most people would not be surprised that the primary topic this month was on staff shortages and some of the conversations around what solutions might be available there. We were able to share some of the things that have occurred in terms of there are some flexibilities within proclamation language for individuals to work. There have been some additional flexibilities with licensure requirements and who can serve, but then it's the bigger collective issue of, you know, how do we draw on individuals to serve in these roles? It was very, it was good to hear from the districts, kind of their direct level experience, what this is, and different asks that they might have for us in terms of how we can help support the workforce shortage there, which goes into the collective workforce issue that we're addressing as well. So when we talk about, I'm shifting sort of a little bit now to the department's priorities. You know, from a legislative standpoint, the department is pretty limited in scope in terms of what we're asking for. You know, we have a few technical corrections that I'll talk about, but there's a bigger conversation of just workforce overall. So rather than having any sort of specific ask, what we're doing is engaging in feedback from the field on two different things. What is the experience of shortages and what are some potential solutions? That is being led a lot by a teacher shortage task force group that Larry Weiss has been leading on behalf of the department that was instructed through legislation to occur. We'll be getting some feedback from them in December with some possible ideas. A lot of these things are distinguishing between what can we already do now and what will require legislative ask. So that's bigger than just the department. It's not just us advocating for change. It's a collective group that will give feedback on what needs to be done. The other part then is how we engage with workforce preparation with our schools. So we have sort of the issue of shortages within workers in the schools, and then how do we prepare our students for futures in areas where there's workforce shortages as well? So the bigger vision of how do we blend some of our partnerships and better connect schools with businesses, the needs of communities, and really engage in furthering those conversations goes back to these workforce and assessment follow-ups that we're doing to help change kind of the landscape of what that conversation is. So I feel like I'm putting all these pieces together, but they sort of connect. So it's this high-level conversation of how do we change what learning looks like? How do we change the experience of engagement between businesses and schools? And what does the workforce look like for everyone going forward? It's different. There is not just a workforce shortage in one area, so there is not one single solution. So how do we engage all of our partners in a better understanding of what we can do to help meet that need going forward? So high level, that's kind of where we're at. Specifically, there are a couple of things that, from a legislative standpoint, we'll be looking at is just some real, really nuanced kind of technical changes where some changes in language in terms of going from referring to English-language learners in some of, I don't know what code section it is, I apologize, I don't have that right in front of me, where they're referred to as limited English proficient, and we want to change that to English learners. We're consistent in lines with ESSA. And then there was in House File, let me pull it up real quick, on the changes to diversity plans, there was a permit for this, House File 228, that when diversity plans were edited in districts, that there would be an open enrollment period for the next, this sort of current academic year. Well, right now, it's sort of unclear in the language that they could potentially extend beyond that year, so we'll be asking for sort of a technical language cleanup on that to clarify that we believe the understanding is just for this year. Very small things, but they are things that we want to make sure that we get changed. And then the bigger issues will be not so much led by the department, but us engaging in very broad conversations of challenges for workforce and educators and staff shortages and what that looks like. I think there will be, as last year, more of the asks will be coming to us than being led by us. So I know a lot of the conversations, I know you've brought up, John, is understanding what the department's role is in some of these legislative asks, staying current on things that are being proposed. It will be really important for you to continue engage with the updates we provide as things will be, I'm certain, coming swiftly through the process, and we will make sure we update you on our role. But at any time, if you have questions, make sure, please make sure you let us know. But there's a very small, we have a very small, limited legislative agenda coming from the department. Any questions on any of that?
One of my questions for you would have been the staff shortages that we're seeing in education. I mean, we're at critical mass now. We're not talking about just a small problem. We're talking about a critical problem. And my question for you, what are we doing about it? I mean, how can we contribute to solving that issue? And when we're closing schools now in Iowa because of the end of teachers, we know some of that's COVID-related, but it's also because of the huge drop in the number of kids that are actually choosing education as a major. So I thank you for that update. Again, I think this is a critical, maybe the most important thing that we're dealing with.
Yes, yes. And it was really nice to have, you know, the conversations with the staff, and you know, we are really trying to make sure we can understand. There's kind of two pieces of it, too. It's the recruitment and retention. So when we talk about some of the recommendations that might come from the teacher shortage work group is more on maybe the recruitment and pathways in. But then there's a retention piece as well, and what sort of big ideas do we have that might change the narrative a little bit in terms of the profession, what that looks like, and what the needs are. So we look forward to continue to engage in that conversation, but I think the more stakeholders we have involved, the better that work will be.
Is this something that, I mean, because I think the retention piece is probably usually, I've heard stories about, you know, teachers one to three years out, kind of getting burned out and then kind of leaving the profession and going somewhere else. And so is that something that they can, I mean, I'm sure a lot of schools already have ESSA funds kind of like, you know, I mean, maybe put in different places already, and they've already kind of been spoken for, but is that something that they can use those funds for retention of teachers, maybe creating an environment? And I'm not sure, you know, what that looks like, but is that, because I mean, I would assume that that might be something that might take money in terms of like, you know, maybe salaries as something, or just, you know, making the experience better somehow?
There's sort of, it would depend on the specifics of that. There isn't money really available just to say, hey, here's a bonus, or hey, here's something we can give you tied specifically to educators. When you think about spaces or conditions, that might be a different conversation because there's some things funds can be used for facilities or resources that are available. But that specific dollar amount is really not tied to the bigger issue of what that might look like. So some of the conversations are around what the requirements are for licensure, some of the ongoing requirements for licensure, some of the potential challenges getting into the pathway. So when we get some of that feedback from that group, I think that will set the stage a little bit for what changes can be made to affect the workforce in the most strategic way. And we would like to make sure we get some of the feedback from the group first before I start to speak for them, which is different, you know, so I think we need to wait to have some, some of the information shared from that group first.
And that'll be in, you said, they, into some.
So they, it was, it was actually, interestingly, it was supposed to have been completed, but there were some very engaging conversations, and they needed to add another meeting to sort of finish the work. So once that recommendation comes forth, that will be presented to you from Larry.
Okay, perfect.
Is there much discussion on how to attract more diverse students into teacher ed programs?
Yes, and actually, that was the specific target of that task force, was really tied specifically to diversity. But in the conversation, it's kind of evolved to, we have this specific targeted area, but there's a bigger issue as well. So yes, that is the lead question of that feedback. And there's some, there's some exciting ideas that are coming out of that. I think you'll be interested in hearing when that's recommended.
I mean, you know, we all know that students learn best from people that look like them. And there's a lot of diversity in this state and very little diversity in our teaching force.
So I think what you'll find is there's going to be some very broad discussions about a lot of these issues going forward. We will certainly make sure we keep you updated. Again, when we send out those updates, anything new that we have, we will make sure that we provide to you. But it'll probably be a continued part of our conversations because I would expect it to be involved in some sort of legislation in some way that we'll make sure we bring back to you as well.
It would be my observation that any legislative remedies need to be dealt with now, now, before we get into the session. So to the extent that we can hurry that up as board members, use our influence or at least a visit with the folks that are going to bring those legislative remedies, we need to do it now. And I would encourage everyone to do that.
Well, and what that does go back to, too, is your role as board members when we talked about engaging with a school, engaging with your legislators. This is part why I want to give you kind of our high-level direction, what the conversation is. It is important to, you know, ask specifically, you know, when you meet with the schools, what are your needs? What's the challenges you're facing? You know, we've had some schools come up with some really creative solutions of how to solve a problem, but it shouldn't have to be that hard. So like, can we simplify their path to that solution? So their experiences are really valuable to us in terms of identifying the things we need to fix to change that path. There are schools doing some really great things. We don't want to make it so difficult. We'd like to make it easier for them to still do those great things. All right, that's all I have unless there's other questions. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we go on, and then I ask for comments, right?
Yes, on the minutes, there is a correction that needs to be made. On page four, the first vote, I was not at the meeting, so I don't know if that was somebody else or whatever. You caught that. So my name should be scratched from the roll call vote.
And my name should be inserted?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's it?
That's it? Okay. All right. Can I get a motion to approve with the additional comment of the changes that were made?
So moved.
All right, it's been moved to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the motion carries. Oh, okay. So now, State Board Google Director.
Good morning. This is David. I am the voice from above once again. And rather than, yeah, well, rather than try to run down the hall with a laptop and get going, I know we're on a time constraint, so I'm just going to do things from here. I'm going to be able to share my screen. I'm going to walk you through some of the finer points of using Google Drive. If you have a question or something that's confusing to you, you can either contact me at a later time, or you can scream out as we're doing this. So Google Drive, if you'll think about it, is nothing more than a storage location for files that everybody can easily access, either from their home on a computer, you could do it on a phone, wherever you have internet. This is all a browser-based, so my recommendation to you is to make sure you're either using Google Chrome or Microsoft Edge. And the reason we say Microsoft Edge is because it has pretty much the same technology and its backend is Google Chrome. The only reason that we recommend this is because we know that Google does Chrome, Google's taking care of the application process. It's just going to behave better for you. So there are a couple of ways that you can get to drive, but one of the easiest ways is to type in up in the URL bar, drive.google.com. You don't need to worry about the other garble to cook at the end there. So drive.google.com, as long as you are signed in to your browser is just going to come up magically. Otherwise, it's going to ask you for your work, or the board email address and your board password, and it will bring you to the screen. Now, obviously, you're not going to have 20 million things like I have in my Google Drive currently. However, on the left, you're going to see pretty much the same thing that I do. You're going to see the new button under the word Drive, Priority, My Drive, Shared Drives, Shared With Me, Recent Start, Trash, and it'll give you an amount of storage that you're currently using. Now, my drive is your personal space. You can put anything in here that you want, and it is yours. You own it. I can't see it. Nobody else can see it unless you decide to share it. And sharing is a completely different conversation. Again, this is all in my drive. You'll notice that as you're over here on the left where it says my drive, there's a tiny little arrow, and if I open that up, it's going to look very similar to the File Explorer that you're used to in Windows or the Finder in Macintosh, if they still use Finder. It's been a while, guys. So anyway, you can see it's just a folder list, and if I keep opening up folders, I'll see files, et cetera. Now, the one that's important to you for our purposes is the one that says Shared Drives. So if I click into Shared Drives, you're going to see a list of different shared storage locations. And these shared storage locations are secured so that there are specific permissions for people to be able to edit or view. In your case, you probably only see two. That would be IDEO Department, which I'm not 100% you see it, and IDEO State Board of Education. This is the one that you'll be accessing most often. Again, I'm just double-clicking, just like I would in a File Explorer, and it's going to show me all of the options. These are all folders that have been created by Carol, and those are the locations. It's all pretty self-explanatory at that point. In addition, these are the files that have either been updated most recently across the top, or the files that you've actually accessed most recently. Now, the beauty of Google Drive is that Google Drive could care less what kind of file you're saving there. It is not limited to Google Apps like Google Docs or Google Sheets. We can drop PDFs, pictures, videos, Microsoft Word, Excel, PowerPoint, doesn't matter. They're all going to live there nice and happy. When you go to access one of these files, oh, let's go ahead and just, let's not look at that one. Let's just go ahead and look in the State Board 2021, which are invited out by month. And let's just look at the Adopt SBE. We open that up. Now, this is going to open in what we call a preview. This preview is navigable, so you're going to be able to move through the file just like you would any other file. Please note that there are times when you're in this preview mode, you are not going to be able to perform any action on the file. In this case, this is a PDF file. If it required a signature from you, as an example, you would not be able, you would not be able to do that in this preview mode. However, you can move up and see the open width, and it'll give you some options. And there's also over here on the right, the ability to print the document or download the document, and you can download that document anywhere you wish to do so. So I'm going to get back out of this, and that's the little arrow on the left-hand side. Here is the other really powerful piece with regard to Google Drive, and that is when you open an Office document, it is actually going to open in the browser. Now, there are some pluses and minuses to this. Here's one of the minuses. Every once in a while, if you have a lot of picture or graphics, it's going to be a little bit wonky. And sorry for the weird word. It's just going to be a little strange, and you can see some things are missing. But as I go down this document, it pretty much looks like a Microsoft Word document. Now, you'll also know that this is a Microsoft document because in the upper-left-hand corner, where the title of the document is, it also says .docx, and when I hover over it, it says that it is in Microsoft Word format. Now, you can edit this document all day long, and it's going to allow you to do those edits and save those edits. So as you make a change on a document, it's still going to maintain its Microsoft Word, pardon me, Microsoft Word formatting. I can also go ahead and go to this file, and once again, I can download the file, and I can download it in a number of different types, Microsoft Word, ODT, rich text format, and you can also convert it to a PDF if you choose to do so. That is basically how those things operate for you. If you need to deposit a document into Google Drive, you would simply open the folder that you would like to do that, put that file into. So I'm just going to drop a file into the State Board 2021 just for fun. So we're going to go down here to File Explorer on the lower left, open that up, and as you can see, this is your standard view. When you do this, it shows all of your folders on your PC. If I go to my desktop, I have a file that says, this is my test document. To get it up into Google Drive, all I have to do is drag it and drop it. When I do that, it's going to show you that, hey, I uploaded a file, and this is my test document. It does still label it as a docx. When I open that file, it's going to do that in Google Docs. It's taking a few moments because I'm on wireless. I apologize. So once I've done that, I'm good to go. I can edit, do all sorts of fun things. And again, I can do that with any file type. And again, I can do that with any file type, and it's going to be available to everyone. That's the quick explanation of Google Drive. Do you have questions?
I do not think that I have access to this drive. The dropdown on my drive, it doesn't have any shared drives.
I don't have any shared drives either.
So when you're going into Google Drive, you do not see anything here that says Shared Drives?
So there's the My Drive, and then when I hit the dropdown button, nothing drops down, and then there's just the Shared With Me.
Okay, so you do not see shared drives at this moment?
David, would they need to be logged in with a certain email address to see it?
And I'm logged in with my.
Right. I believe everybody's logged in. I have the feeling that the permissions have not been set yet for this. So I will speak with our guru for this and get that taken care of. I don't know why it's not.
Were you able to, you upload some stuff, no?
I put, I dropped some stuff.
You know what? You indeed, you all are not on this list, so I will make sure that gets taken care of. See, the important people can get in. You notice that the IDEE Zoom room is a member in here. Yeah, we will, we will get that taken care of right away.
And then what permissions will we have? Will we be content managers or managers?
You will be content managers at that point.
Thank you, David.
Hey, cool. Thank you so much, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for bringing that up because, okay, what am I missing? I don't know what I'm doing.
Alright, so now we get back to charter schools. Oh, look at that. We're like big screen now.
Yeah.
Which camera am I looking at? I don't know which camera to look at. Where, where am I looking?
Oh, that was.
No, he's got different ones he can control.
I feel like I'm always looking at the wrong place. I'm trying to like look at.
My hair is thin. That's a good. Had a nice long run of a full head of hair. You know, it was gonna happen sooner or later. Thomas May is Department of Education General Counsel and Rules Coordinator here with Janel Brandhorst for item two of three items on your agenda today regarding charter schools. This is adopted and filed for the new Chapter 19 and some technical corrections in Chapter 68 to account for the two existing charters that will still continue to operate under Chapter 68. They're not gonna be required to convert to the new chapters of the charter in Storm Lake. For those who attend the charter school session tomorrow at IASB, that will continue to operate under Chapter 68. So this is for any new charter that is starting up after the effective date of House File 813. So, just a global overview. I don't think the department, I don't think the legislature, I don't think the State Board, I don't, I'm assuming that I don't think the State Board. I don't think that the educators, the general public, has sort of fully processed the change that the statute made. And it is big and bold as some things should be, but when, when something is big and bold, the butterfly effect is, it's major. So I'd like folks to just think about language, this is gonna be a choose your own adventure during the first couple of application processes. Just an example of the difference in mindset and the difference in sort of the scope of review. Ordinarily, we think about waiving statutory requirements, or I'm seeking a waiver of thing X. The default rule for charters is they're exempt from that. They don't have to prove that they need a waiver, they're just exempt from it. Except unless it's specifically listed or two areas where they were required to seek a waiver. So that, that language is critical because a waiver implies somebody has a burden of proving something. An exemption, there's nothing to prove because there's no standard to meet. So too quick, and this was discussed during the application. There are two areas where in the application process, the charter must seek your waiver, and that is the offer and teach components of Chapter 12 and days and hours, the minimum school calendar. Other components of the school calendar, they're not required to seek any waiver. They are exempt from. They are exempt from the limitations around, regarding year-round school. They're exempt from the August 23rd school start date because those were not specifically listed as things to which they either must comply or must seek your permission. So things that ordinarily would come to either the director or the, the division administrator or the bureau chief as a request for a waiver, not so much under this chapter by design, by intent. So a couple of process questions or process observations, and then Janelle and I will get into answering some questions that came up during the rulemaking process as well as questions that you asked earlier today that I think maybe were answered in the rules document themselves. The department received 12 written public comments that are listed on page two. A very broad amount of comment from charter school advocacy groups like Reaching Higher Iowa as well as the Iowa Association of School Boards, Urban Education Network, Real Schools of Iowa, Iowa Legal Aid, which is Iowa statewide nonprofit law firm for people. Full disclosure, I was, I was a baby lawyer at Iowa Legal Aid for seven years in Waterloo. So I was just happy to see that they're, that they're still active in education law. That made me happy. And then there were some written public, there were oral public comments and an opportunity for participation. Some folks attended the hearing just to listen, but three folks made a public comment. Walking through the big picture, there were comments that were just, "I don't like charters. I don't like the idea. Charters are the worst thing since Iowa hired Todd Lookleyer." Charters are, or the charters are the best thing since Iowa State hired Matt Campbell. You know, shaving cream out of the can. The statute is what it is. And, you know, we were gratified that people felt open to express those opinions, but those are opinions that we really can't do anything, that you and the department can't do anything about. There were some observations in the public comment that were already addressed in the rule itself, such as the requirement that a teacher be appropriately licensed, that an administrator be appropriately licensed under the framework that the application set out. There was an extensive amount of comment from three commenters on the deadline. This is kind of like the, we tried to have a happy medium. And understanding that a happy medium is like this imaginary thing. Nobody's ever happy with compromise. One of my favorite Texas politicians, a progressive named Jim Hightower, back before Texas deported all the progressives, was, he said, "There's nothing in the middle of the road except yellow lines and dead armadillos." That kind of feels that way here with this November 1 date. Nobody really is happy about it. It, but, and maybe that's the best possible outcome. It's the least worst outcome. The comment of, you know, that was expressed here was, "Why so short?" The comment expressed by the commentators is like, "Why so long? If I miss August 1, I have to wait till the whole another August 1." Like if I have this idea, you know, there was an attempt to sort of sync it up better with sort of the school year, the, the meeting, the times at which the State Board met. So the, the noticed rule provided August 1. The request from the commenter was February 1. And considering your calendars, we moved it to, the proposal is to move it to November 1.
One of the questions I had is, the further presentation was rolling, is that is the department looking at, for the State Board, just to approve or not approve all the charters at one meeting?
And I think that that would be a, I think based on deadlines, when it comes in, there might be some that are easily approvable. There, there might be some where the department works to get a charter application to approvability. I don't think that there's a, I think it is whenever they come, whenever they're ready to go onto your agenda, whenever the department has a recommendation.
So really, then the November deadline would be the last possible date, but supposedly, they could apply and be approved before that November.
Right, so that's the, that's the deadline for the application. If they get the application in on August 1, then the 75-day clock starts running.
Right. But if they submit it before that, could they submit it before that?
Yes, so that's the last, that's the deadline. It's a, it's the, it's the ceiling, not the floor, or the floor, not the ceiling.
Deadline if you want to open by the next school year.
Right, I got that, but conceivably, people could be submitting applications at all kinds of a timeframe, as long as they meet the deadlines.
Correct.
So it's sort of back to the State Board, if there's an application ready to go and it's a month or two before the ending deadline, can it be approved ahead of that time?
Yeah, I think they're all deadlines. And so we'll have to work really closely with our, kind of when our scheduled meetings are and possibly do some things in between meetings if we, if we need to, especially this year with the February 1 deadline. I think the 75 days is Easter weekend.
It'd be safe to say that if I'm gonna apply, I have my, my application approved, that they would be working with you along the way. Is it safe to say that it'd be, it'd be foolish just to bring an application in and throw it down in front of yourself, prove this? So it's safe to say that if they actually get one to you, probably a pretty good chance that it's gonna come to us eventually.
Yeah, I think there is a, I think there's something specifically about us providing technical assistance if there's something that they want to waive, but we want to provide them technical assistance all along the way, for sure. Yeah.
And there will be an obligation, there will be an up or down vote regarding every application. So even if it's something that the department says, like, can't, there's this defect in the application and the, you know, there, all three raiders scored an item of zero. The board will have to take an up or down vote. Any charter application will come before you with a recommendation.
Even if it has a zero, it won't be criteria.
A couple of other comments that came up during work session that I want to just hit on before diving into the line by line. The governing board, who and how the governing board is selected, that is inherent in the governing, the definition of governing board on page 14 of the materials. So how is the governing board selected? It's selected based on how the contract says it will be selected. So rather than a requirement that there be elections, there no, there's no requirement that it, there be a certain number of votes, ranked choice of voting, like Maine does, majority, first past the post. But there's no, it is whatever, you approve it when you approve the contract. So there's an opportunity for not only instructional innovation, but innovation in governance.
I have a question. So, a group has applied, and one of the criteria, everyone's rated zero. So then you would come to the board, present that, and recommend that we not approve it. At that meeting, is the applicant able to come and say, "This is why we don't agree with your zero rating," and then the board decide?
Go ahead.
I think the applicant would always have the opportunity to hear, heard before the board, in part because the application process requires an in-person interview. So there, the applicant would have a voice before the board, both when this is on your agenda as well as the interview process.
Are we interviewing them, or is it department?
I had that question too.
So who is doing the interview?
It, it is not specific. It says each application review shall include an in-person interview with the founding group.
And it is silent as to whether that be State Board members, a subcommittee of the State Board, or department staff, or some blend of that.
So we have written rules for that?
I'm gonna stop you there because there's, if we wanted to cover every possible case or every possible use, the rule, these rules would be as thick as the special education rules. So do we want to write a rule to write a procedure, to write a standard, to write a procedure, to write a standard, revise the procedure? I think that part of the overarching framework of this is to allow max flexibility to the applicant within these very well-defined, as Janelle said, well-defined parameters. So the procedure itself, similar to the scoring metric, the, who are the, on the three department staff who score, there may be a reason to involve, or not involve, depending on the case, State Board members in the interview process. If it is sort of a partnership with higher ed, maybe members of the community college council would like to be involved or should be involved. If there is a sort of a focus in the charter on underserved populations, maybe representatives of the State Board who have a particular interest in equity. So I'm, I don't, I don't think it would serve this board or the department or applicants well to specify at that level of grand size who's on the interview team. Because I think it needs to respond to the needs of the moment and the strengths and weaknesses of the application.
But could the State Board, as a board, vote and say, "We want a member of the State Board, determined by the chair, to be involved in every review." I mean, could we do that, and then it's enforceable, or, well, it's the recommendation to the staff?
The rules allow you to establish, require you to establish procedures, practices, and criteria. And those procedures, practices, and criteria need not be in rule. They could be in the, the operating procedures that we've reviewed in the last couple of meetings, or they could be in the charter application materials themselves. But that is certainly within your authority based on the statute and the rule to say, as part of reviewing, establishing procedures, practices, and criteria, we want a State Board member to be on the team, or we want the chair to be, the board president, to be able to appoint a member.
So follow-up with the application process. And if this is too granular, just please stop me. When the application is submitted, let's say that for one reason, there could be a standard or a criteria that is not meeting expectations. Is there an opportunity, or will there be an opportunity for communication back to whoever submitted that application? Hey, we can't approve this as it's presented. Before we submit it, here's a timeframe where you need to maybe change, rearrange, provide additional information, rethink what you're doing before that application is submitted. I just look at the reports that we're receiving from some of the colleges as far as the programs, and they all had areas where they needed to address before State Board approval. Will there be an opportunity for that or not, or is that just too granular?
I can answer from a technical assistance point of view, and then Thomas can have a legal point of view. We really want to work with people as they're completing their application before they submit it so that we don't run into a situation where something is submitted with zeros across reviewers. So we're taking that kind of part of our responsibility really seriously. As far as legal standpoint, Thomas, I don't know what the answer is.
I mean, the charter school applicant can always amend their contract. It's just as a matter of common law, but that would restart the 75 days. So it would be, behoove the charter applicant to, before submitting the application, that, hey, we want to do this thing, we want to do this innovation. We want to have a STEAM-focused charter and front-end load our courses on, our course selections on this, less on this. How do you get us to approvability? That would be the vision for, I think what Janelle is proposing as a matter of policy and practice and just being, being a good helper, it would be allowable under the, the rules that are before you today. So I'm gonna hit a couple of the comments and then, that were made, and then open it up for questions. And I'm gonna kind of go in, in order. One commenter requested a definition, requested that it be made clear based on some federal case law that parent need not be the biological or adoptive parent. It could be somebody else who has the authority to speak for the child, like the guardian or a surrogate parent in special, the special education context, somebody who might represent the interests of an unaccompanied homeless youth. And so for that reason, youth. And so for that reason, there is now a definition of parent, sort of broadly global to, to make sure that it's not restricted to biological or adoptive parents. It's anybody else who might be able to make, to be the educational decider for the child. Page three, a lot of comments regarding the application process and performance framework. Could we give more detail? Could we give more detail in rule? Department sort of resists that because we want to box anybody in. The lack of detail that the commenters want is actually an opportunity for folks to do. The other thing was the deadline that we discussed. The November 1 could be submitted any time before that, but November 1 is the drop dead date to allow the department to sort of bring you a recommendation consistent with your historical meeting schedules. There was a lot of comments regarding the application contents itself. Some of these were things that were, might be good ideas, but that would require legislative correction. But there were changes made. One related to, the portion of the application where the applicant was required to sort of disclose their key leaders, who their founding group is, who their principal is, who their head of school is, their board member, if available. And the request from one of the commenters was, if it's not available, tell the state board in the application by when those, those names would be available. And I thought that that would be a reasonable request. Within that 75 days, hopefully by the time a recommendation is presented to you, that will give the applicant the ability to populate those names and populate those roles. So if those roles aren't currently filled by the time the application is submitted, when will they be filled by? So that Janelle and her team, and you all can react to who those folks fill in those critical leadership roles would be. The other change is, in addition, regarding compliance with federal law that applies to public charter schools regarding nutrition services and transportation services. So if a, if I'm providing nutrition services, I have to comply with National School Lunch Act. If I'm providing transportation services, I have to provide, comply with the requirements that the US federal government would impose on all student transportation.
And you say if, so they can opt out of that?
Well, I mean, there are schools that do not provide school, school lunch anyways, currently, like if I'm a virtual charter, if I've got no brick and mortar campus to transport students to, I wouldn't necessarily need a transportation department. If I'm a virtual charter, I wouldn't need a national school lunch program.
But is that, is that only for virtual, or can brick and mortar charter schools opt out of that as well?
Well, it would be something to, they have to explain in their application how they are going to.
And so then by either accepting or denying their application for a charter school, there's not like, you can't pick and choose which ones they opt out of? And so like, if you accept their charter school application, you accept all of the things that they're opting out of?
Correct.
Okay.
The perform, bottom of page five, top of page six, the performance framework. There were some additional requests, requests that sort of went, that went beyond the scope of the statute, or that were either covered in data that the department will already collect and report regarding charters, such as discipline data. The one change was sort of a clarification, clarification from some of the charter school advocacy groups, what do conditions for learning mean? And why is that necessary to collect? Well, it's necessary to collect because it's a requirement of the state's plan under Every Student Succeeds Act. Public charter schools will be held, or Students Succeeds Act accountability framework. So that's why conditions for learning, that we added in a parenthetical that gave the authority for why the department is requiring conditions for learning as part of the accountability framework.
I just have a quick question. On page four, with regard to the background of the funding group, does language will be added in parenthetical, in paragraphs such and such? What, what language was added?
So the language is, and it's the same, or both, and it is, bottom of page 17, here's an example. If any or all of this information is not available, a projected date by which it will be available. So if I haven't, if I've got my administrator, but I haven't populated the members of my, of my governing board, the date by which I will inform the department and the board of who my governing board will be.
Yeah, so if you look at the application, where, the way that we kind of tried to implement that was to ask the date when the people, when the names would be available, for people, if they knew who the people were to gather that background information, we are asking for resumes.
And that's part of the process. So that's before they ever come to the board, right?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
General operating powers and duties. This goes to the notion of what charter schools are required to do, are not required to do, may do if they would so desire. One commenter requests that, a statement that McKinnon Bento applies, that homeless students have protections if they're enrolled in charters. And that, that goes without, goes without saying. It's sort of an example of a federal law that would apply. But there are a couple of other things that commenters requested, that based on, you know, student safety and visibility, would recommend specifically calling them out as health and safety rules. The commenter specifically requested that the department call out that charter schools are subject to chapter 103, the rules on seclusion and restraint that you recently revised. And those rules have a two-pronged basis, civil rights and health and safety, and health and safety, not just of students, but of staff. And so, yeah, in paragraph 19112A, for those of you who are playing along at home, it is on page seven. And it's on page 27 of the rules, it's itself, 28 of the rules itself. This parenthetical is added after meet all applicable federal safety, federal, state, and local health and safety requirements. So here's the additional language, including but not limited to mandatory reporting of child abuse, under Iowa Code Section 23269, investigation of abuse by school employees under Department Chapter 102, and seclusion and restraint under Department Chapter 103. So those, it's a non-exhaustive list, but those things are, the team at the department felt that those were necessary for, to specifically call out. Here's a possibility for, you know, legislative correction. My former people at Iowa Legal Aid recommended that the school fee rules apply to charters. So if I'm a person with low income, and I attend Southeast Polk High School, or Norwalk, or Bonnarang Farrar, or Davenport North, home of the Wildcats, and I'm of low income, my fees are waived. If I'm in foster care, my fees are waived. Great idea, love it, good public policy, not in the statute. The only thing that is specifically mentioned, free of tuition, and fees are not tuition, and free of application fees. All of the other, it specifically mentioned application fees, and did not mention any of the other fees. So this was something that the administrative rules review committees thought would be a potential legislative correction, but it's not something that is, would, that the department could add to be consistent with, and still remain consistent with the statute, because the school fee waiver rule is a school law that's not already listed. It's, it's not a school, it's not a school law to which charters must be held. The next change was the rule of construction that was in the notice rules, that would limit charters to the rules, the rule exemptions in their application. And the commenters raised a couple of points in opposition to that rule of construction. One, the rule of construction is not in the statute. It's inconsistent with sort of the broad liberal authority that charter school founding groups have. Two, what happens to after adopted laws? So if I'm a, I list laws, one, two, and three in my application, and then afterwards, our colleagues across the street adopt law four, am I or am I not exempt from that? Because that was never, it could never have been in my application, because it didn't exist when I applied. So it was designed to ensure transparency, but it overshot its mark. And so for that reason, the department proposes deleting the rule of construction based on feedback from these commenters, as well as the reaction to the rule of construction from the administrative rules review committee. The two things that are most likely to get a district on the naughty chair, offer and teach minimum school calendar. And those things schools must, charter schools must ask for waivers for. So functionally, the rule of construction is addressed by the, the requirement that if I'm seeking to do something different than offer and teach, or I'm seeking to do, offer less than 1,080 hours or 180 days, you all must approve that. There are a couple of funding questions. Three commenters said, well, what about federal funds? The rule was, the rulemaking was amended to make clear that if there are any federal funds available to public charter schools, they would be distributed based on, like, defending federal criteria, federal funding formula. Iowa Association of School Boards requested for community college tuition reimbursement, that the district of residence pay the community college directly, rather than cutting a check to the charter, the charter school to cut a check to the community college. And I'm like, personally totally sympathetic with that. One check is less likely to have errors than two checks. One check is less likely to raise accounting issues than two checks. But the statute says the charter school shall pay, not the district shall pay, the district or residence shall pay, or shall pay on behalf of the charter. So this might be something that's subject of legislative correction. I'm totally sympathetic, sort of on a personal and professional level, as were my colleagues, to this comment from Iowa Association of School Boards, but it would, it just doesn't, it doesn't fit. Did raise a good point about, Iowa Association of School Boards did raise a great point about how do districts of residence know their students in a particular charter? And rule that to place an obligation on the charter to let district of residents know that District X, we have three of your resident students enrolled, District Y, we have 14 of your resident students enrolled, here are their information so that you can include them on your count. It would be, put districts of residence in a hard position, where they'd be expected to pay for children who they could have counted, but didn't, because they didn't know who they were. Last couple of comments are more of a, you know, oversight and correction, oversight to Mr. May's comment about how do we, like, monitor charters, annual report. The department will review those reports annually, similar to public school districts and non-public school districts with their, the desk audits, the review of data. There's a sort of progressive, progressive discipline, not discipline, but progressive sanctions and support. You need to do this thing better, you're sliding off the track. Five minutes on the super nanny timeout chair, you're in forever timeout. There's a specific mechanism for charter revocation. But the renewal process is every, the renewal timeline is every five years. If a charter is sort of off-track beforehand, there's an opportunity for the department to provide support. What one of the commenters asked for was sort of like, the reasonable opportunity for the charter to correct. What does the department and what does the legislature mean by reasonable opportunity? And anybody who's been to law school would know reasonable is the facts and circumstances of each unique case, which it would be a fool's errand to try to define that in rule, because that, the rule then would be as thick as a Manhattan phone book. But we, we listed in the comments, you know, depend what, the nature, number, severity, duration, cause, repetitiveness, and correctability of non-compliance, and water in the ice cube tray. It's going to vary based, like, one minor compliant, one major compliant, non-compliance, or an area of non-performance might outweigh like 10, you know, like venial versus mortal sins. It's going to vary based on the facts and circumstances of each case. So we will set them out in the preamble for future reference, but there's just no way to fit them into the rule in a, in a comprehensive way, in a, in a way that wouldn't like, sort of like, deforest the planet when these rules were printed. Charter school closures, one applicant asked that the application itself specify what would happen if the applicant closed. And cart before the horse on several levels, including the state board will set out some standards for charter school closure. And it would be in a nod position if the application and your standards did not line up. And then...
Can I ask, Thomas, if they, let's say there are some state board charter closure protocols developed, and can they put that in there? After we have those standard, I mean, I think the concern here is that the cart gets before the horse, but if you have, if you know, if you know the horse, then can you do it?
Well, I think that then they would be self-executing, because you would have the standards, and it would, yeah, there would be no need to be in the application, because it would be like...
I was thinking like nonprofits always say, here's what I do when I dissolve.
Well, I mean, and I think other than the nonprofit corporation act, there's not really standards for what would happen upon dissolution.
Right.
There were a couple of questions that some commenters posed about, that really, really weren't sort of like rulemaking, but here's a convenient way to answer them. I'll go through these. Can multiple school districts get together and form a charter? Yes, because the notion of a founding group has, you know, max flexibility. Can charter school students be in the same classroom, or can they share classes? It depends on the agreement between the charter and who they're sharing with. Item four, online education, back to the earlier discussion about being a virtual charter. Offer and teach limitations in chapter 25612. There's some limits on how much virtual instruction could be used. So if I'm a virtual charter, I would need to come to the state board to get exemption from requirement that offer and teach be brick and, brick and mortar. But if those are granted, there is a pathway forward to being a virtual charter. Athletic eligibility, based on competitive equity, you're held to pass all, you're held to the general transfer rule. It's a, once you undertake this voluntary activity of offering athletics, there's no way that charter school under this chapter will be permitted to be the University of Miami football program circa 1987. Can a student attending a state board charter school get a school permit? Department of Transportation, I've reached out to them as, to their rules coordinator. They're going to provide guidance, but the magic eight ball would say signs point to yes. And then the last couple of them, Ipers, I've reached out to Ipers' general counsel and rules coordinator about, and they're sort of dissecting the statute to see where a school board, state board model, or a founding group state board model would fit within Ipers. Is a school required to issue a diploma? Why wouldn't they, if they offered a high school program, especially since the public charter school is held to graduation requirements? Can I go to higher ed with that, without a diploma? Can I, can I move, can my charter be, I'm moving straight to higher ed so that I can get an associate's, or a higher, a higher ed credential, as well as my diploma? That really is a matter of higher ed governance and cooperation with the charter. Trenacy law that applies to, that... Tendency law that applies to, that, tendency law specifically governs parents, not schools. So there, there would be an obligation for charter schools to cooperate to ensure that parents get their kids to education in a way that meets chapter 299. And then there's a specific question from Legislative Caucus staff about discipline and discharge due to provisions of chapter 279 apply to charter school teaching contracts. Not unless the contract says it does, because those provisions aren't specifically listed as things that the charter school must comply with. So quick buzz through, a large number of public comment, again, our, the, our habit going forward is to line by line each comment and each rationale. If there are questions about these comments that we haven't already been surfaced, or about the rules themselves that did not receive public comment, Janelle and I are at your disposal.
I have a, a question, and I'll just use the athletic eligibility rule as the take on point. If my understanding incorrect, is a charter school only has to require, apply for a waiver for offer and teach and the 180 day requirement? So why doesn't this also apply? Why does this apply to them if that's the only two things they have to ask a waiver
It would apply to them because they're competing, it's sort of like a condition of competition. You don't have to, but if you do, like if I'm a public charter school that wants to field an athletics team.
Oh, so I have to follow the rules that.
That govern everybody else.
Okay.
So like I can't field 20, I can't field 22 year olds, or people who have, you know, I, I can't be sort of like a publicly funded AA. I could conceive of a situation where if it was like a charter school only league, maybe it might be different, but as soon as I'm competing with public, non-public schools, it's a matter of competitive equity.
Okay. Got it.
What about joint enrollment? Can they be, they participate in, if you go to a charter school, I guess, can you participate in joint enrollment with community colleges, or would that be something that specifically had to be?
Well, it, it sets out funding for students who participate in concurrent enrollment. So the expectation is, the expectation is yes. So there would be no need for funding this be set out if they couldn't. So I think you can infer from the fact that concurrent enrollment funding is mentioned in the statute and the rules that, yes, they could, of course, depending on sort of like the, the, the requirements imposed on the community college as well as the, the public charter high school. So the default rule is yes, to any question. Yes, 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 but, yes, maybe, yes, in this case, only a few no's.
Thomas, looking at 19.12, section four, with payment. So that she'll be, basically if they're not counted, they're going to be reimbursed by the department.
In the initial.
In the initial year of enrollment. So this is like startup costs, this is primarily for a student who has never enrolled in a public.
Yeah, I got that, but so the department means the Department of Education is going to pay for that?
Well, the very next rule, there's an, there's a annual standing appropriation to cover all of those costs. So rule 1912.5 recites what's in the statute. There's a, so let's say there's 20 students who are never on account statewide. The department of, statute says Department of Education, so I think this is something that, yeah, this is something that we're going to have to manage, but it's, there'll be money for it because it's a standing appropriation.
Yeah, I just suffer.
I mean, it would make more sense to fund.
Well, you know, this may be in future years, this could be something that would be submitted to the school budget review committee too. That's what happens with students who are open enrolled from a district and they didn't have a chance to count, they moved to the district, they devout the district, went to a different district and an open enrollment. The resident district come back to the school budget review committee and request funding for those students who they're paying for, but they never had a chance to count because of timing. That makes sense to you then?
Yeah.
Because there's a mechanism in place.
There's a mechanism in place.
That's in statute.
Right.
I'm not going to argue with it. Future years.
I mean, and I think there's already been situations like this where the conversation about House File 813 was macro level, meta level, and it did try to address some of these administrative questions, but there are a couple of administrative questions that would either need to be legislatively answered or corrected. Questions, comments, insults?
I've impressed the work that's been done there. Thank you for your work on this.
If the charter school doesn't come from the local school board, it's not a part of that process, I guess they are in some ways anyway, but must you take me as an athlete? If I went to a charter school in that district, do you have to take me? And if I want to play ball?
So.
And my, my charter school doesn't have a basketball team. Can I play basketball for the local district?
That answer would be probably no.
Right, and there would need to be a sharing, there need to be a sharing agreement, and there currently for students who are open enrolled to virtual charters, the ability to participate in their district of residence, only in their district of residence for up to two activities, that's not necessarily in the statute because there may not be open and enroll, open enrollment might not apply to these enrollment choices that families make. So, you know, athletic eligibility, if I don't offer, there's a possibility maybe for a sharing agreement. If the charter is geographically limited, perhaps I could share that, that activity with a brick and mortar school based on, based on a contract.
Could that district charge me for doing that? They say, part of the agreement, I understand, if, if we make an agreement with each other, obviously we'll work out those details, but is that part of it? You, you could be charged for your participation in that sport? Charge a hundred dollars or?
The school could be charged, the student could not, because this, it has to be tuition free. And there's no, there, there should be no pay to play in Iowa. I'm certain there still is. My sister and her children in the district that's initials are Davenport, they, they've stopped that. But if it, if it would, the athlete could not be charged fees that would otherwise be within the, the, within the requirement of being tuition free.
Different than another athlete.
Correct. So I'd like to share the appreciation that has been shared with us, with the folks who participated in their, participated in self-governance by providing comment. You know, a lot of times the rules we bring before you might have one or two comment, one or two people interested, but a lot of people were interested, a lot of, these are high visibility rules, and the comments to, the commenters to a person advanced the quality of the rules that are before you today.
Right. Very much. All right, any more questions?
Just one, I, I know we're early in the game, but do we have an idea of how many applications we might be looking at coming down the pike?
I'd say that we have received questions or interest from maybe a half dozen, does that sound about right, Janet? Some public school districts and some independent founding groups so far. All right. Any more questions? Can I get a motion?
So move. And the recommendation for that motion is written in the changes, Thomas.
So adopt new chapter 19 and amend chapter 68.
Yep. I will second that motion.
All right. So move to second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, the motion carries.
Thank you, Thomas.
Thank you.
And Janelle and Janet and Director Levo and it's, it's.
Everybody.
It takes a village.
I'm going to get my next big stack of paper because I think I'm also presenting the.
Yeah, you're, yeah, yeah. Big stack of papers. Thomas, up again.
All right.
We're back on schedule.
My stacks of papers square. David Kennedy, are, are there people appearing for this agenda item in reopen enrollment of EB and MB? Seymour Community School District, the appellate or the appellate?
I have no one here by those particular names or initials.
All right, and, so the, is Superintendent Brad Brianna on the call?
No, sir.
And counsel for the district, either Kristi Latta or Alec LaCher?
No, sir.
All right. This is an open enrollment application, late filed, the app, the allegations for both children were pervasive harassment. A couple of technical issues that are resolved in the appeal, they didn't check the box, pervasive harassment on the application, but they attached a letter broadly construing it, reading the letter with the application, everybody knew what this was about. So the fact that the box wasn't checked when I was evaluating the record and the arguments, I just sort of disregarded that. But the merits themselves, the Hannity standards, they're, they're uncomfortable, but nobody's, there's no, no better alternative to sort of square these standards with the statutory requirements of repeated acts of harassment. So the Hannity standards have occurred after March 1st, or the student is able to demonstrate that the extent of the harassment could not be known until after March 1st. The harassment must be specific electronic, written, verbal, or physical act or conduct, which does one of four things. Reasonable fear of harm to student or persons or property, substantially detrimental effect on the student's physical or mental health, substantially interfering with academic performance, or substantially interfering with the student's ability to participate, benefit from the services, activities, or privileges of the school. Evidence must show that the harassment is likely to continue in the, despite sort of reasonable efforts. Last meeting, you heard a, an appeal that you denied rehearing for today about where the school did do reasonable efforts, but they weren't, weren't successful. So reasonable, it was likely to continue despite the school district's reasonable efforts. And then the fourth criteria is the school district must, changing the school district must alleviate the concern, and the appellants have the burden of proving all four. Failed to prove one and two, so failing to prove one and two, as far as my analysis as administrative law judge, I did not address three and four, because three and four are premised on one and two being proven. So the evidence in the affidavit of appeal, as well as documents presented, the harassment of MB was throughout the year, off and on, throughout the 2021 school year. Some of the events occurred after March 1, but they, there was no evidence presented to me as presiding officer that those events after March 1 were any different in kind to the things alleged to have occurred earlier. The medical documentation was for both children throughout the school year. So it's based on the documents that the appellants themselves submitted, there was a failure to prove March 1. So standard one. For EB, name calling continued through the most recent softball season, not sort of disregarding the effect that name calling can have. But there was an utter failure of proof here. What names? The worst name that EB was called was a teacher's pet. And so when I look back at like, what is an objectively hostile school environment under the Hannity standard? Having a hard time seeing that any of the evidence, and that was sort of like the best possible case, or the biggest possible insult that the family presented. There's no requirement that school be unattendable for the child, but there is a requirement under Hannity that the rule, that the school be objectively hostile. And would a reasonably prudent student in that circumstance feel harassed by, the only specific name that was mentioned in the record was teacher's pet? Well, I'm being harassed, how? Repeated question on direct examination, repeated questioning on cross-examination, more detail please. And I just think that my recommendation to you is that there was absent any detail for EB. Now for MB, it's more concerning to me, and there was some derogatory names regarding sexual orientation for this young man throughout the year. That's the problem for me, though. Had this spiked or occurred after March 1, maybe EB, maybe MB is in a different case. But looking at the one instance after March of 2021, March 1 of 2021, the district had sort of a security protocol for its Chromebooks that were, that like, as weak as Iowa State's defense this past weekend. I mean, just penetrable, but tell me I'm wrong. And such easy to guess passwords, that a child was, a couple of children were able to guess other students' passwords based on, you know, and go in and modify their, their Chromebook accounts. And for this young man, they changed his screensaver to an image of two, two males kissing. In the context, could that be bad? It's interference with his school issued property, you know, and the students were punished. And there was no evidence that it occurred after March 1, after that date. Cumulative behavior, like a death from a thousand cuts, it, it could accumulate to where it is bullying and harassment, but I don't feel that the evidence in this case showed that that happened after March 1, because it was similar in kind throughout the year. They offered evidence about, about what is going on in the prior school year based on your prior precedent, that's irrelevant because it postdates the decision under review. I was concerned that one of the alleged harassers was, their parent was on the school board, and I, I asked for like supplemental argument on that. But it was something that I could only be curious about, because they never raised it at the school board itself. They never said, you, school board member, need to disqualify yourself from this consideration. Had they, and the school board member not, it would have been a different sort of procedural question, but the rule is the state board reviews for like errors that the local board made, and the local board can't make an error it didn't know it was making. It has to be pointed out to it first, and I think in this case, threshold question, you know, I'm, I'm concerned, concerned enough that I asked for supplemental argument, but not, but when I read through the record, it was never raised before the school board. It was raised only to me and to you. And since it was raised just at this late date, before the school board member could act and recuse her himself, before the school board could address the parent's concerns, it's beyond our ability to review. The school board can't make an error it didn't know it was making, it has to be called it, called out to the school. It has to be called, called out to the school board so it has an opportunity to correct. So that, even if so, even if, even if one school board member were required to recuse, this is not an, in my evaluation of the evidence as presiding officer, this was not a close case. And for that reason, primarily because the evidence the family themselves presented was this started before March 1 and continued throughout the school year, the proposed recommendation is that the application be denied and that the decision of the Seymour Community School District for both children be affirmed.
Did you find the March 8th Act to be more egregious than the general calling someone gay?
It could have been, but there was no evidence presented about what happened earlier in the year. So I mean, like for a real estate appraisal.
He said it was a pattern. I mean, I was just wondering what was like the photo prior to March 1? Is there any evidence of that?
There was no evidence. And.
Did the family, just curiosity, did the family have an attorney? Any number, were they doing this all on their own?
The family was doing this on their own, and, but the family was repeatedly offered both, like, anything else? Do you have anything else, any more detail? And the, to their credit, the attorneys for this Seymour Community School District, Mr. LaCher, Ms. Latta, sought to extract that information. They weren't, primarily because I trust them as people, and if there was a correction to be made, they would have, they would have recommended it to their, their client district.
Are the surnames of the students who made the insults not known to the board when they had the hearing? There's one parent who.
Right.
Did they, I mean, if it was, you know, Joe Kane and Brian Kane's on the board, maybe somebody would ask, hey, is that?
And I, I think that that would be a fair question, but my sense is that the detail provided at, to the board was as sparse as the detail provided to me. And so how would I, as a board member, know? I mean, the, the most egregious thing were two things, the, the changing of the screensaver and the name teacher's pet. Other than that.
It just seems like in a smaller, you know, community name, like.
You might know, but I don't know and you don't know. That's the problem.
Okay.
Do we know if the school board member's child was involved in the changing of the screensaver?
After the fact, they were not. The, the, the school board member's child was not, best I can tell, the school board member's child was not in that particular instance.
So the punishment was concerning misuse of technology, not trying to slur someone. So the, the school district said, yeah, again, you messed up with the technology, but we're not concerned about the kindness or the, I mean, that.
I don't, I don't know, I don't know why the, again, the record was fairly sparse. I don't, I know that they were disciplined. I don't know on what basis whether I can, it would be unfair to say, it would be unfair to say that it was a tech violation only.
Well, that's kind of what, this, this sounds that way.
Because it would require sort of impermissible inferences for me as presiding officer to fill in gaps from a record that was not.
The question is, can you allow a late filed based on post-March 1 information, and it looks like there's no proof of anything?
There's proof of a.
Not enough.
There's proof of a March 1 act, but the, sort of the, the texture of the entire record was, especially from the medical experts, it was throughout the school year.
What if it really was pornographic?
That's a.
What if there was, I mean, would that be different?
It, it would be, it could be different.
What, what obligation does the school district have to us? Aren't they supposed to, to fill out a form and send it to the state anytime we have bullying and harassment, or is it a second or third offense? Please help me with that because it escapes me. But I think that the, they're, they're in our obligation to report those incidents to us. Is that not true?
They're under obligation to report instances, incidents. They're not under obligation to report sort of the, there's no text box where they say this is what happened. They report instances of bullying, harassment, though.
Okay, so if I looked, they should have sent that to us. Is that correct?
There, there should be in the stick count of their data, not necessarily narrative.
A, a specific.
Right, correct.
They might, yeah, I don't know. Okay, that helps. Thank you.
It wasn't for lack of trying by both me and counsel for the district about why this record is sparse.
Are there any additional questions or comments?
I would move that we affirm the decision of the Seymour Community School District Board of Directors, which denied open enrollment in this case.
Okay, there's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so move to second, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, the motion carries.
Thank you, Thomas.
Again, these are tough, and especially the one that was on the agenda this morning. There might be some opportunity for some sort of rule correction or legislative correction, but it would be hard to correct around something that you have as much facts as I did.
So just a follow-up, I know we've answered the question, but as a board, could we have said, we want more, more information, go back and get it? Or that would not be a possibility?
I think that that would be a struggle because the sort of general burden of proof, the general rule in administrative procedure is the, the people who want to change the status quo have the burden of putting on their best case. So for us to prove the appelle's case would be for us to request that, I'd have a sort of a, a due process struggle with trying to be a neutral arbiter of the evidence that's presented.
But I think if they had been here.
Right.
It would be a completely different.
So they were, right, if the representatives were here to be questioned by you, which is your right. But, thank you very much.
General question, it seems like frequently the March 1 deadline becomes the issue. Is that in statute, March 1?
Right. So repeated acts of harassment that cannot otherwise be accommodated, it's an exception to the March 1 deadline. The reason for the Hannity rationale is if it was happening the whole year, you know, I was aware of it before March 1, I wouldn't, you know, the rationale is if I'm, if I'm aware of it and I failed to act on that which I'm aware, what latitude should I be given?
The real difficult things about this is that kids are really reluctant to report these things because they know there will be retaliation, there will be implications for them personally. And that's, that's a difficult part of this. It's, when you go public and you start calling people out, there's going to be some retaliation. Your kids, I think, reluctant to do that.
And it.
It's hard. It's, it's hard for you then, I mean, obviously, in, in making those decisions. I'm sorry, Thomas.
What I suspected versus what was proved. And I took a little bit of latitude in decision writing to say, this is not just, you know, what I suspect is going on. It's not just boys being stinkers, and that was a, a word that somebody used on behalf of the district, and I wanted to sort of give them a caution, like, it's not, it might not, it's probably, the, the gut tells me, the heart tells me, but the head says it's not proven. So that there was a, a caution to the district in the decision itself, that this, you know, give, give heed to what is going on during this school year. What's going on to this school year is not subject of this board's review because it's not subject of a school board decision, but district handle your business.
Are people generally aware, parents, families generally aware of that March 1 deadline?
In the open enrollment handbook and in the application.
Schools have a duty to also publicize that day as well.
Yeah.
If, if I'm a parent and I go to my child's guidance counselor February 1, and I say, these things have been happening, did they tell me that open enrollment is an option?
Probably not. Well, I got you back on schedule and then I got you off schedule.
Five minutes.
That's a good question. I've asked that question before.
And, you know, that may be some, a leadership or a rule-making opportunity that you are, that you all might have, either a legislative recommendation or a rules recommendation, but I don't think it would be fair to impose that in the context of a contested case.
No, I.
I think it's a, yeah.
Yeah, not, not.
And I think that that might be a, that might be a good idea as part of like, either a recommended bullying harassment protocol or, you know, elevating the, the district's duty to sort of like publicize that March 1 deadline beyond sort of the baseline that already exists. But thank you for your attention. I did not realize, after having done contested cases, presided over contested cases for a year, I didn't realize how hard they were. And the first time somebody said, your honor, and I realized they were talking to me, it still hasn't sunk in even after a year.
Tell me, I wanted to, I wanted to find out if that school district has reported bullying and harassment instances in their school. Would I have access to that? Or is it just you that have access to that? Or is that, how do I gain access to that?
Depending on the, depending on the N size, depending on the number of reports, the school, the public might have access to it. But in your role as state board, as like supervisors of public, public and private education in Iowa, you would, if you, if you were particular, if, if you were particularly curious, we could find that out about Seymour.
But, but we got only, it might say three.
Right.
You wouldn't know.
I know that.
This. If it said zero, that'd be interesting, but otherwise it's irrelevant.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I think, is lunch, lunch is here.
Yes.
Okay, so we're, we're just a few minutes off, so I think we'll go ahead and we have a scheduled break until 12:05 for lunch and then return to board reports. So David, we will, well, Brooke will adjourn us, but we will adjourn until 12:10, 12:05.
12:05. Okay, we're going to come back at 12:05.
Correct. Stay adjourned.
Oh, we're adjourned until 12:05.